Hey, it's seven o'clock. I want to call the July tenth twenty twenty four CBA meeting. My name is Chairman, Chairman Secretary, we're giving our jokes, then alternate. Bill Minister will be soon and Mr. Kravitz was not here this year. We have one case on the agenda. Before the time, so sure, read the call. Let's see in terms of the management or business proceed. First time you speak is to identify yourself near the address. Tell the board what is important and why. After the board have questions, we'll see if there's anybody here speaking their composition at that point. Or will resist, I mean, turn the meeting. You're welcome to say, listen to our discussion, but you can't add anything. It hopes, what's the public here closes. Now, there's a couple of things. One is takes four affirmative votes. To primaries. The normal common on the board is five, as you see this on the board. So truly the option of saying, hmm, I, I pay by however better chance. And be the next thing would be July twenty four, or you can decide to go forward.
And you, you don't have to decide now as well. Yeah, present based on feedback.
Okay, Tom, we hit the, on the call.
Okay, the call of the meeting today is D A R twenty four zero 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 three. Fifty five Irving Street Mystic, Rotten, Connecticut over six three five five. Description of variance. Relief of front and side yards. Set back to accommodate additional living space to an eight hundred square foot home. At the closest point of the west side, eight feet from the property line. Relief from the front yard set that to twenty two feet and nineteen feet on the east side. Eight feet from the west side property line and fifteen feet to the east side property line. Twenty two feet to front property line. That's completes the description. The three two dash two B requesting side yard setback relief. Through eight feet, eight point four feet. And four point two dash one side yard set. Hardship current nonconforming lot does not accommodate any expansion. On either side of the current eight hundred square feet. Okay. I've reviewed the, the. Mailings. And unfortunately, I think Tom, you're aware that some of the mailings. Let me get it. Eight, I think of the, of the mailings were compliant. For the record, put in the ones that were not and why they're not. Of the mailings. The majority of them were July first twenty twenty four and in compliance. There were four that were May twenty third twenty twenty four. And those were sixty nine Irving Street, three eighty one Noank Road. Twenty six Packer Lane. And this one I'm not sure about. One fifty five Irving Street, and I'm not sure. I, I think that's in an error.
Yeah, that's a mistake. That should be one fifteen.
It was, was that your address?
One.
Your fifth.
Look, I'm fifty five. That's a mistake. That, that should be one fifteen.
I puzzled, puzzled over that.
Yeah, yeah, I can see why. Yeah, so.
It got sent to one fifteen.
Yes, yes, you got sent to one fifteen. I don't know why I wrote that, but it did get sent to one fifteen.
So those.
But the dates are. Who.
They're early.
Outside, let me go to those reading. The applicant must have. Public hearings by mailings on copy of the legal notice. And any other required information provided by O P D. Not less than ten gal- calendar days, but more than thirty days prior to the scheduled public hearing. The applicant must give proof. So. I don't know what you're gonna suggest.
So these were mailed to the, the abutting owners before the, the applicant mailed them right away. They've all been informed of the meeting and, and the app, and it has talked to them as well. So you can move forward knowing that. And if there is always an appeal. You know, that would be necessary, but if it looks like there won't be, if nobody peels it, then it, it doesn't matter really.
Uncomfortable.
Yes.
The one which you said is going forward because. It's a small number, one of them. Now, for that. If you've sent out and communicated what you're doing.
Yeah, I communicated. They, they're willing to write a letter and it, you know, they're on vacation right now, but I. Can add that to the file or whatever.
Spoken to themselves.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes, they have no problem. Well, parties that are directly abutting, they, no problem at all, yeah. Actually.
Just to clarify. All the abutters have been notified.
Yes.
Officially, and we have. Proof of that with, with all the mailing receipts. The only, the only problem is some were notified a little too early. That's fine.
Correct.
So if we make a decision. Those three or four people would. Conceivably have a poss- have a chance to appeal that decision. Based upon that grounds alone.
They could, but it looks like they've seen the plans and spoken to the applicant. It's like that if it, they didn't submit anything in the negative, it looks like it'd be not a problem.
Okay, you know, but that's something you should consider also. You know, you don't want to go through this whole process and then have it fall apart later on.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty confident. I mean, we, we had a good conversation and they were very. Uh, willing to allow it to go through, you know, so I, I have no doubt about the neighbors at all. I mean, they're all pretty good. They're well.
I'm, I'm. If everybody, if you go forward and you're, you're okay, then I'm fine.
Hi, Paul. This one thing, cell phones on vibration.
If I come up here, yeah, okay. Okay, um, all right, my name is Bruce Low. I live at fifty five Irving Street. In Grotton, Connecticut, and looking to add approximately. Um, seven hundred square feet to a property. The. Our lot right now is a nonconforming lot. It doesn't meet the current. Uh, zoning codes. So the setbacks won't work. On the property and just looking to see if, if we can do an addition on the house. I have some plans that are at least. Uh, the lot is a little bit over, I think it's point three four acres. I think it's. Around twenty.
I couldn't read, I couldn't read this one.
Yeah, I have. I have some drawings if you.
And either copies of what was already submitted.
Yes.
We don't need to.
You don't need to. Okay.
Well, I want to look at it, because I can't read this.
We don't need to collect them and, and.
Okay.
They've already have copies for the class, so that's fine. We can look at the, the figure.
Yeah, I can let you look at this. Should I just hand one? Yeah, there you go. I have three copies if you want to care. They're the same. They're, they're all the same.
And that's the same.
On the.
Fourteen thousand five hundred square feet.
Yes, on the. Uh, the right is existing, and this is the proposal of where the addition would be.
Understand what's on.
It is on the, what is considered the west side, I believe. Uh, if you're facing it west side. Alright, so. We, we plan on adding one garage bay. And additional living space. Um, to the right side of the house and the rear. And a little bit on the front. Our plan is to, the, the roof line is currently like a flat roof. It's, it's a slope roof. It's not a true flat roof, but. We want to change the roof line to be more of like a cape. Style more fitting into the neighborhood. From what it is right now. Is to have additional living space, but plus also headroom in the, in the inside, you know.
Well, these pictures here, this is part of the house, right?
No, no, that's the side. That's it. That's the, the side where the addition is gonna go. It's gonna come out a little bit past these posts here. Where that walkway with the overhang. Yeah, I'll show you the pictures of the front of the house. This is the front of the house right here. There's some pictures of the front.
So you're planning on coming out.
It's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be even with the, this garage right here. It's gonna be even with that. The second bay, that part is gonna be identical. Yeah. It's gonna, the bay is, the second bay is gonna go here. It's gonna be in the same line as that particular garage bay. Is basically, it's gonna cover. Where the walkway is, it's gonna come out a little bit past that walkway, the covered walkway. And that'll be the garage. Right here, we can see that clearer right here. So it's, it's coming out from here fourteen feet. So it's a little bit past here, uh, the overhang.
Yeah, the secretary, if he's from.
Yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna be here.
They're, they're included in.
I have an initial one.
They're included in the plan.
Yeah.
So you don't have to stamp them. They're already in the.
You though.
Yes.
Yes, they're in the.
We're awesome.
I just said multi, I have a few extra photos. They're not in color, but they're just different viewpoints of. Property.
And when I'm looking at the plan, can I speak out of turn?
No.
I can't speak out of turn. When I'm looking at a plan view, like the walkway. This is actually, I mean, that's part of the structure. So the plan view must, the walkway must be underneath this section of roof right here. Right here.
Um, the walkways on this side.
Alongside.
Yeah, this is the walkway right here.
Okay, okay, so.
Yeah.
Take that line. And like you just said.
It only goes a few feet out from that walkway. Or the remain, like the, the living space, the, the garage is over here. Yeah, and it's just even.
You know the square footage of the shed in the back?
The shed in the back is twenty four by sixteen. And that was built last, uh, last fall.
Presumably that meets all the, all the setback requirements, correct?
Oh, yes. Yeah, the shed is, uh. I don't remember exactly what the distance is, but the, it's pretty far away from, from the, the setback. Uh, this is it right here.
Yeah, no, yeah, I drove, I drove by just to take a look at, it's a nice little neighborhood back in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't really, I didn't even know it was back there.
Yeah, well, it looked totally different before when we bought it. It, we cleared a lot of trees and. You know, I'm gonna be.
So is that your stone wall there?
Um, it is. I believe. Be honest with you, I think it's. Just the property line. I, I don't know if it's ours or it's the neighbors. It just goes along the property line. Yeah. Yeah, I honestly don't know. But that's just been the property line, I guess. Yeah.
And orienting me north, south, east, west. My assumption was those Irving Streets to the north, correct?
Yes, north.
Okay, so that's west, that's east, this one's south.
Yeah. Yeah. The lot at its widest point is only eighty five feet wide and. At the narrowest point is fifty five, and that's way in the back. That's back here.
It is true. Yes.
You have plans already drawn up for this.
For the addition? No, no, I, I, I have an architect that is. Um, I'm going to be going to, but I needed to get this. Done first. Yeah, but I have to get this approved first. Before we do it. I mean, there's no point in hiring an architect. To draw if you're, you know, it's not gonna be approved.
So, so what's the drawback in going up?
Um. Well, I'm currently sixty two right now, and my wife and I are thinking long term. Uh, we want to keep it a single story home. And, um. Not a hundred percent sure. Uh, that we could do that structurally. Um, it just. It seemed to be the, the better fit to do that. Uh, this way. On the side. I don't think we could do it. Going up and. My wife and I. We plan on living there long term, and we're thinking about our senior years, you know. Um, not doing steps. So we wanted to have a single, single level, uh, in a home and just, you know, just a little bit bigger and a little higher. Ceiling line as far as, uh, because the kitchen ceiling, I, I think they're only maybe. Seven, seven and a half feet high in the kitchen area, and then it. It goes up higher in the back, so we want to just continue the, the line one way. All the way across. And just.
How old is the house?
Um, the information I have is that it was, uh. It was moved from Long Pond. Um, in Ledger to. Uh, its location, I think in nineteen sixty one, I believe. Um, but I don't know how old this is before. Yeah, it was a lake house. Yeah, and they moved it there and. Set it on that lot.
Questions?
Um, no, I think all of the. Applicants' requests, I think are fairly clear. One question I had again was that the. Nailing to one fifty five Irving Street, I want to mark this. Fifty five.
One five, one, 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 five. Yeah. Yeah, it's, uh. Um. Uh, Brian Cutler. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's been, it's a part of the record.
So basically, all the additions that you're doing are all on the, on the, out for the. Current roof lines.
Um, pretty much following it.
I was.
It's.
On here, you're on, I can't come out to what the roof line.
Uh, toward the front, yes, it, it, right here on this portion of the house. Yes. Yeah. This is going out beyond this walkway. It's going out beyond this roof line a little bit. Trying to remember exactly what the amount was.
Um, so where is it on the plan?
Yeah, right here. That, yeah. Yeah. The garage, and this is.
That's the west side. That's the west side, right?
Yes, west side.
You want to go eight feet from the property line?
Yes, at the closest point, eight feet from the property.
What is it now?
Uh. Fifteen? It's like maybe fifteen feet, I mean.
Yeah, I saw a scale. Someone had a scale. No, actual hard scale.
A hard scale?
Yeah, an architect's scale, leaves good. Did I see them? My same things?
Yes.
Not anything? I'll be right back. I'll get one.
What this distance was, I think it's.
That does look like fifteen or sixteen.
Yeah, it's like fifteen, eight, eight. Or fifteen.
Which, which point you're talking right. Right here, right here, when it was before. This is a straight line, right? And that is. Which we need for the setback, and I, I, and this would be the point of the existing building.
Yeah.
Yeah, right? So I would, it's just about double what.
It's about. I'd say sixteen, seventeen feet.
Yeah, right there.
I mean, from, from this corner of the, of the breezeway thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would be the closest point to.
You're coming out beyond that breezeway thing.
Yeah.
This section here, right?
Right, but that's further, that's a wider section because of, because the wall goes in a little bit.
Right.
All right, so this is.
To me like ten to twelve feet there where you're proposing. And then you propose an eight. Point four right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Versus what you have now. And you want to come out a little bit, okay, you're coming out beyond the roof point of the garage and the, on the north side, correct?
On, you know, you know, we're even with the, uh. With the garage, uh, the front of the building. Where the garage, the second garage is gonna be exactly the same as this one. It's gonna be the same. Yeah, it's gonna follow that line. Yeah, yeah.
Cause that's, that's got an overhang, what?
A couple feet, yeah, okay, yeah.
So where do you want to know? What position?
All the, now what? West side. Wants to go eight feet from the property line. My question was how close to the property line is it?
Okay, all the old parts with the overhang.
So that is about twenty.
Barney?
Yeah.
Do you want to approach twelve feet from this?
Right here. Yeah.
Yep.
And. Same question on the front.
By the front? Um, the very front for, um.
Still here.
You lost your phone, seven back twenty two.
Let me read.
Okay, for the garage?
Front yard setback, that's the front.
Yeah.
Right there. So it's the same basically. It's just that it's coming out more. It's going. Parallel to the existing front of the house.
Okay.
So it's right there.
So it can't be the, the re- re- question.
No, the existing house doesn't. It's twenty two point six is the, about the existing house. In fact.
Yeah.
The new addition is just a, a foot back from that, so it's less encroaching.
Are you talking about elongating it back to the south?
Um, it. It would be very difficult to do that, um, just because with all the, uh, plumbing. And the piping, there, we want to add, um, a bathroom, another bathroom. And just with the plumbing, it's, it's not gonna line up. There's no way it would line up, but, uh. Our feed for the sewer line and everything is up front. It's up in the right. Um, if you're looking at the house, it's to the, uh. Uh, right, uh, if you're looking at the house, it's on the left side of the house, left front. Corner.
That's where you threw it through.
It goes out, it exits. You'd never, there's no way you could bring it just with the height and, uh. In the basement and everything, there's no way you'd be able to bring the plumbing lines that far over, no way. It's, that would have to have a, uh, it just wouldn't work.
There's always a way. Yeah, the question is how much the cost is in general.
Yes, but yeah, um. Well, within. Our budgets and our limits as to what, you know, we can. Um, spend on renovations to, uh, the home. The most. Uh, cost effective, but you know. Lining up systems, uh, would be with this. Current plan.
Okay.
We, we said before that, that we, you haven't hired an architect. So. How did you come up with this rendition of this? The reason I'm asking this is because usually I see an architect's plan, well, this is where the kitchen goes, and this is why I have to do this. How do you come up with this plan as to what the layout should be?
Well, just, um. What I had envisioned, um, as far as the appearance of the house, what, what general ideas, what we would like to have and where, you know, the space. Um, we want to enlarge the kitchen area, uh, in dining, in, in this area right here. Um. And then, you know, add like in the master bedroom, you know, uh, uh. Another bathroom and just, uh, like the dining area, this is. The way it's set up. Um, in what we envisioned, um, works, you know, along with the garage, you know, the, the extra garage bay, because we, you know, that garage. Currently, it's pretty, it's really narrow, super narrow, so. Um, we want it to make it, uh, I, I think it's only a seven foot. um, we want it to make it, uh, I, I think it's only a seven foot, it's a seven foot wide door. Which is, you barely get a car through, it's, it's so with the second bay, we were gonna split the difference and, you know, the opening so that it's a standard. You know, um, I think it's eight foot wide, typically, eight foot wide door, um, so.
What, what, I'm sorry, you were gonna say, you all said?
Yes, yeah.
The, so the original house, we said was around eight hundred square feet, you know exactly what it is, or is it?
I believe it's eight hundred and forty square feet on the town. That does not include the garage.
Eight twelve on the property.
Eight twelve, yeah.
On the property, but.
On the property, twelve.
But that would not, that would, would not include the garage.
No, I don't think so.
No.
It would not. So. And, I, I know, but then, so we're jumping between that and, and, um. Um, an architect is, is gonna say that, well, it's all part of a structure, so, um, my decks because of their attached become part of a structure, what I'm thinking of here, I wanna make sure that he's uh, okay for lot coverage.
What do you, did you figure it out? Well, but I look at all this space in the backyard, I don't think there's actually, there's a lot of competition.
No, there's not a lot of.
It's, it's.
I was thinking that lots only fourteen thousand square feet, i- is the limit at twenty percent, so.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent, so. We're gonna, we'll probably be fine.
Oh, yeah.
I'm all set, thank you.
That's correct, no comment, no planning.
Uh, yes.
Is anybody on Zoom at all?
There is nobody on Zoom.
All several questions, Bill. Okay, that's all the roads, we'll post pop up them when I.
Thank you for, uh, hearing me.
You know, there's always this issue and milk stick with, with our, with our non-conforming things that we have there, but then, um, fortunately, your lot is somewhat bigger than some of the other ones that we deal with, but still, um. I look at the zone, it requires twenty foot setbacks on both sides. Requires thirty foot setback in the front, thirty foot setback in the back, okay? Um, and right now it's non-conforming. This is gonna increase the non-conformance considerably, okay, which is one of the um, mandates that we have not to increase a, an existing non-conformance under nine, seven dash three A. Um, in nine, seven dash five A, so, um. I just, you know, I, I'm, I'm opposed to increasing a, a non-conformance that already exists. And, and I see that there's an alternative, if it's taken, to either extend back on the lot or to go up a story. You could go up a story and, and double the size of the, um, the unit. Um, well, I don't see a real hardship in, in none of this, I don't, I haven't seen a hardship to grant it, actually.
Obviously, a very difficult lot, pre-existing, not, not, not pre-existing. If a building was put there in sixty-one, not sure we talked about that. Does it predate zoning, that, that sliver of land? It does, okay. Um, it's already non-conforming, um, I'm, uh. You could take a position if we don't know increase in the non-conformity. And ne- never extend, um, that, that, um, dimension of the house, and I, I, I don't think that's the right way to go, I, and I think since we're already non-conforming, because of the unique piece of property we have, I, I'd support the application. And, and grant the request as presented. I agree with Bill. It's a unique shaped lot. And some of it's pre-existing.
Well. It's restricted by the shape of the lot. I was a little concerned about going from fifteen feet to eight. Depth of the sun, west side. I prefer to hear from a professional architect, the second floor, not hold. That I understand age, living, uh, seers. Several time, um. But I have to wrestle with the factors. Is that enough to justify the additional users who have been? Given the, you know, the fact that a lot of us are, have to begin with, and I've replied there many times. I hope you notice, because it stays out the neighborhood, almost like a certain uh, computer, but to run, um, I would have a tendency to, to grant it. Um. More so than a chef, rejected. So. Uh, but, and if further comments, I'll call for a motion.
Um, make, make a motion that we accept the.
Let me just make one. I'm very sympathetic to your point here, okay, it's, it's a, the way the lot is set up. You know, it's, you're stuck with it essentially, you know, um. But when I read the, the zoning regs and I go to nine, seven dash three A, it says, no non-conforming use shall be enlarged to occupy a greater area of land than was occupied at the effective date of opposite, of adoption or amendment of these regulations.
Yeah.
So to grant this variance, we wouldn't be following that one. Then I go to, um. Nine. Nine, seven, five A. Okay, it says, no non-conforming structure may be enlarged or altered in a way that increases its non-conformity. That also, this, this plan would do that. So. I feel constrained by the zoning regs, even though I'm sympathetic to the, um, to the point of the, the applicant here. Um, especially since he hasn't explored the possibility of going up a story. Which could be within the, the envelope of the current building and could double the, the living area in that particular lot. And that would be allowable under the current regu- uh, under the current non-conformity.
What you're reading in the non-conforming sections are, are standalone, someone can't increase the non-conformity. That's why this board exists, everything you do increases in non-conformity. Cuz it varies the zoning regulations, everything you do here goes against the regulations because of a hardship. So I, I think that saying it's gonna increase the non-conformity is, that's everything. Everyone, everything you look at increases in non-conformity. That's why.
But I mean, those are the basic tenants we should live by, okay, unless, unless there's an extreme hardship. Right, that's, that becomes a question for me, um.
You know, we have a lot previous to zoning. The house previous to zoning put on there in a way that doesn't conform with current setbacks.
So it's already non-conforming.
Oh, it's totally not.
I can't do anything to it then by the law.
I mean, it's, it doesn't have twenty foot setbacks on both sides.
You can't do anything.
It doesn't have a thirty foot setback.
If I literally interpret the regulation.
So the lot goes one way, the house goes another, so it doesn't even fit within them. And then, even then, the setbacks come down to a point which would create a very odd second story, cuz it would come to an angle even. Uh, those, I think those are hardships that were displayed here.
Think back to, we had a house down on, I forget the name of the street, as you're coming into Mystic. And just before you come down the hill to go around the corner, we went up, up the street that goes diagonal, there was a little house that was set up right against the, right against the road, you remember that? The little, it's a, it's a mustard, mustard yellow house, okay? And we looked at that and kind of, uh, split the baby in half kinda thing and, and came up with a, with a a reasonable combination. So. Make your motion.
We're still way out of this then, what's reasonable?
Make your motion.
Make a motion, we, um, grant the variance and submit it. One against you, you're obviously. Three isn't covered.
Right.
You could have backed out and said, well, I'm just saying in case you have another, you're here before us.
I appreciate it, thank you for your time, um. We'll, we'll go, yeah, now we gotta get our architect. Oh, yes.
It's to your advantage to at least spend the money on an architect, because he might come up with some things. And then you'll be back here.
Yeah.
Well, now you're stuck with whatever you drew on that thing there.
Right, yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
Alright.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, you're awesome.
Um. Yeah, you gotta, I think I might have.
Yeah, you have, he's still. So you all have these.
No, I had a blue one. Okay, so, cars on us?
Uh, we have none.
Who, who of the minutes? I would just like to make a couple of corrections, um. Uh, section three.
What's the date for the minutes, just so I have it, June twenty-sixth. Okay, um, section three.
Section three, both cars, oh, you're listening here.
Well, okay.
And again, on, uh, section five, motion to approve, I've got the minutes, you also voted in order this in here. And also marching to adjourn.
Okay.
I, I pointed those out to Susan the other day, so she may, I think, she, she made them in the, in the next minutes that she had. And she also had a Mr. Atkinson, she called him Atkinson at some point, and Atkinson at some point. She corrected that, so, so I'm assuming that it's, yeah.
So it's on further notice?
I, motion to approve?
I.
Second.
Hi.
Over.
Um, old business.
Uh, we have no old business.
About no.
So new business, here's what happened, a couple of things. Um, at first, this, um, the thirty Route twenty-seven was supposed to be tonight. Uh, inadvertently, I think when I was doing the legal ad, I wrote thirty, uh, Route twelve. Because we do more on Route twelve than twenty-seven, so that had to get, um, re, uh, he had to redo the mailings. Uh, and ninety Wells is, uh, he asked for an extension, so that could probably go on for the, um, the April or the August meeting. But the, um, what we did when we scheduled these meetings for this year is we only made one meeting for July and one meeting for August. So for the next meeting on the twenty-fourth, it will have to be a special meeting. Doesn't mean much, we just have to call it, you just have to request a special meeting. Normally, we only have one meeting in November and December, this year we decided to do it in July and August as well, but we're gonna have one. So we'll call the July twenty-fourth one a special.
This is old Mystic, this, this one.
Yes, it's an old Mystic, yeah.
That's your pleasure, you wanna what, for August or do you wanna have a special on the twenty-fourth?
Well, with, with the thirty Route tw- twenty-seven, he's already, uh, done the mailings. So for the, for the July twenty-fourth.
That's overtime, you have to work overtime for that.
That's right.
You want us on the twenty-fourth?
Now it just be one.
Yes, then, so ninety Wells Road, um. We're working out with the applicant or they may, um, not have to go through with the appeal. So we'll see, that, that may be withdrawn if everything works out.
Let's see, uh, San Frupar.
Uh, none?
That's it. Asher, Asher? I approve at, uh, seven forty-seven.